Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for May 2nd, 2022. Can we have the roll?
Greg Strick.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester. Scott Polis.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Scott Polis. Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandy Eber is excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we're through that, we've got some minutes to be approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Strick, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Seeing no objection, that motion is approved. Next up, disclosures. Commissioner Polis.
I was recused from case 2022-016 and related case 2022-0031, the Spinard Road Rehab Project, and will abstain from voting on that case in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Polis. Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strick?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Nothing.
Commissioner Ron?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In agenda item G1, case 2022-0023, I'd like to disclose that my spouse is now the Secretary of the Rogers Park Community Council. I don't believe that that affects my impartiality in the case and would like to participate, but leave it to the commission to decide.
I guess I would just say for myself, I don't see an issue with that, given that we are members of the community and are expected to be members of the community in our participation on the commission. So I'm prepared to proceed unless there's any objection from any other commissioner. Okay, seeing no objection. Sure, yeah, Commissioner Strick.
I want to applaud. Thank you for bringing that up. Good point. I think it's always better to bring up whatever possible disclosures there are.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ron. No, well, I guess I will go ahead and, in the same vein, disclose that Commissioner Ron's wife, who is on the community council, is also my sister, who is on the community council for Rogers Park as well. I will pass the gavel over to the vice chair. Well, because I'm, yeah, so I also, for the same reasons Commissioner Ron indicated, I intend to participate. I don't see it affecting my participation or decision in that case, but raise it for the commission's consideration.
Sure, I see that there's a motion by Commissioner Strick to direct Chair Gardner to participate, and actually, I think since I am holding the gavel, that I will not second that. So if anyone else... Thank you. I see that Commissioner Winchester has seconded that motion. Commissioner Strick, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to actually amend my motion to both Commissioner Rom and Commissioner Gardner. I know that we, they both had the same disclosure, the same item, but is it possible to do... I'm looking here to my left. Is it possible to modify that motion or just let it pass? Was the other one passed anyway by virtue of not voting?
Through the chair, there was no motion for Commissioner Ron to participate. If you would like to amend this motion, you are welcome to.
And that's what I was attempting to do, is to amend this motion to add Commissioner Rom to the same motion to direct Chair Gardner and Commissioner Rom to both participate, and thank them both for their disclosures on this matter.
Commissioner Winchester, would you like to keep your second for that amended motion? Yes? We'll proceed. That motion passes, and I'll pass the gavel back to Chair Gardner.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is an informational item. It's case 2022-0053. Is there a presentation from the staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gardner. This is an information item. This is not a public hearing, and there is no staff report or public testimony this evening. The commission shall take no formal action on the concept report. The concept report tonight for the commission's information is the Mountaineer Drive Extension Project. There is an existing northern 400-foot segment of Mountaineer Drive that serves a fire station in the Bear Valley Elementary School, and there is also an existing approximately 2100-foot southern segment that serves residential neighborhoods. The project would connect these existing segments so that Mountaineer Drive would extend from Rabbit Creek Road to Sandpaper Drive. The project would provide emergency and secondary access, as well as improve vehicular traffic safety, and add non-motorized facilities. All municipality of Anchorage transportation projects follow a context-sensitive solutions policy abbreviated as CSS. The CSS process has three steps: the concept report, design study report, and the plans in hand. The concept report and the design study report go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. This concept report familiarizes the commission with the project, and it's distributed as an information item in anticipation of receiving the design study report. I don't have a time estimate at this time of the design study report's submission date, but the commission would review it at a meeting in the future. Please keep in mind with any questions or comments that the concept report is meant to be an information item only for the commission. Thank you. And I'll note the petitioner, a member of the petitioner's project team is in the audience as well, if there are any questions or comments on the concept report.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, I guess I had a question on the alternates A, B, and C, and this project, I'm kind of familiar with the history of it, and I was curious if the petitioner could speak to... if there's been any leaning in one direction or another.
And if you could, yeah, there's a little talking face symbol that if you touch lightly will turn on your microphone, and if you could state your... Oh, it's got a green sticky on it, I think, sorry. There you go.
My name is Julia Hansen. I'm the project manager with the Department of Transportation and Public Facilities. We did a brief evaluation of the three alternates using the original work that was done years ago and supplementing that with current traffic data and additional, some additional analysis. Right now, we're kind of leaning towards alternate A, primarily because it comes with the less wetland impacts, but also because with the avoiding sharper curves will have better operations, will result in better functionality for the purpose of the road, which is to provide access for emergency vehicles and evacuations.
Commissioner Polis?
Thank you. Similar to just fishing for some information, the right-of-way width, have you guys settled on a 70-foot or an 80-foot? I know the minimum for this road type is 70-foot, but I saw mention of an 80-foot.
Considering the slopes that we're expecting, we are looking at probably needing 80 feet.
Commissioner Spinelli?
I guess I'm starting to remember some of the stuff I read. You had a preliminary meeting with the families in the area that objected, or I don't know what happened. There was some sort of mess. But I don't know how I want to characterize it, but either way, I saw that there was a meeting, and I was just curious if it was expressed to them that you were going, leaning towards option A and what their input was.
We didn't discuss it at that meeting because we hadn't, we weren't leaning any direction yet. We did have some input from them. I can't remember when we had that meeting, and they expressed their concerns. We will have more interactions with them before we, or as we go forward.
Yeah, if I can, I guess, I, there, I don't know, like I said, I don't, I wasn't involved too much with it, but I was watching this project quite some time ago as it went through its process, and my impression was that they were very upset and caused problems for the project, and I guess I would be very wary to have that happen again. I guess that's just like a friendly warning of sorts.
I appreciate you pointing that out. We are trying harder to engage them more in this, in the design this time around, to make sure they're more involved in the decisions we make, but we can only do so much.
Okay, I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much for making yourself available to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda with resolutions for approval. Is there a motion to approve? See motion by Commissioner Strick, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Is there any objection? Seeing none, that motion is approved. Next item is public hearing. This is case 2022-0023. Before we get to that, I will read the procedures by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. And I guess as a question for staff, since we have, you know, we previously received a presentation on this and postponed it to set aside a public hearing, I don't know if there's anything further that you would like to provide before we move forward to take testimony?
Chair Gardner, I just have a brief recap. So this case was before the commission on March 14th. At that meeting, the commission approved a motion to hold a public hearing after an open house for the project. Loop ramp alternative one, featuring an elevated Seward Highway over 36th Avenue at grade, is the preferred alternative because of long-term reliability, high water table, drainage, and maintenance concerns, and that's also the department's recommended approval for the DSR. Just a reminder, staff's recommended approval also had three conditions of approval and two advisory comments. So the three conditions of approval are that the alternative is in compliance with the DSR document, except as modified by these conditions of approval, that a plans in hand will be reviewed by the Urban Design Commission, and that a SWIP will be provided prior to construction. The two advisory comments are to ensure clarity with street names having a directional component and to show in greater detail how the design meets the city center land use designation as the project moves forward to the plans in hand phase. Members of the project team are in attendance tonight. Because there was no public hearing at the last meeting, the project team has 10 minutes to speak to the commission as they would during a normal public hearing procedure. But that's all I wanted to say before, just to recap this case briefly.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, the Chair, Ms. Elvahby. Thank you for the succinct recap. For clarification, do plans in hand also come back before PCC this commission or not?
Commissioner Ron, the plans in hand goes before the Urban Design Commission, but it does not come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, well, anyone from the project team, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to. You've got 10 minutes, but you can reserve some time for rebuttal as well.
Hello, my name is Noah King. I'm the project manager for the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, and I apologize for interrupting. Can you lift up the mic just a little closer to your mouth? Thank you.
Shall I repeat my name? Okay, my name is Noah King. I'm the project manager for the Department of Transportation. This is Steve Noble from Dowell. He is the chief designer, and he has a short presentation.
Yeah, any chance we could get our slides brought up? We're not going to, we're going to spare you the entire presentation again, but we did want to just give you three quick, three or four quick slides here, just to remind you of where we are in the process. We've initiated the NEPA process on this project. It's, as a reminder, it has been determined to be a categorical exclusion, and our preliminary engineering effort is in progress. The 36th Avenue interchange with the loop ramp, Seward Highway elevated over 36th Avenue is the, is the preferred alternative. We're completing the CSS process. We came, we went, came to you in March. We had, we did have our open house on Tuesday, April 19th, which was an in-person meeting at the library, and so we're here today, and then our next kind of big task is the noise study this summer. So because I only see a handful of folks here, and we had actually 90 people come to our open house, we wanted to summarize the major comments that we heard at the open house for your benefit. And so I've got just two slides here quickly where I've summarized the primary items that we heard. We heard concerns and questions about the configuration and routing for the loop ramp alternative, folks wanting to make sure that it's compatible with the future projects that were evaluated north of 36th Avenue, making sure that we, if we went over 36th Avenue, that we could still get under Benson and fireweed and latouche in the future, which we can. Some comments about, why is this taking so long? We've been looking at this since 2013. Get it done. We've, we heard concerns, comments about parking, particularly for the Geneva Woods Medical Center and the former Golden Lion Properties. Some folks recommending for and against roundabouts at the ramp intersections, questions about the landscaping and what the, what it would look like, questions about circulation, particularly in the northwest quadrant. You know, there's a, there's a change in the circulation there for, and everybody knows where Moose's Tooth Pizza is, and that seems to be everybody's major concern. Can I still get to Moose's Tooth Pizza after this is done? And then concerns about security and homelessness in the area, we, that's, continues to be a comment, and in fact, the Geneva, one resident on the Geneva Woods Homeowners Association side, you know, their neighbors were just really intent. They want to make sure we're keeping that fence line right in its existing, they don't want it to get any closer to them. They don't mind if we rebuild it with a nicer noise wall, but they, they don't want it to get any closer to them. Well, one of their neighbors actually said, well, actually, if you moved it in and got rid of this grove of trees that is on our side, then it would get rid of a safety problem for me. So there's, that, that is a, that is and will continue to be one of the major issues, I think, as we, from the public's perspective, is security and safety, and making sure that what we design is maintainable, that it looks nice, that, that it, that it becomes an asset and not just, doesn't create other security issues in the area. A lot of questions about the noise study, and we're going to make that as interactive as we can with the public this summer. We've let people who are adjacent to the corridor volunteer to let us use their homes as noise meter sites for our noise study, and so we're going to do that. I mentioned the preservation of the wall, or at least the wall in its current location. And then a lot of questions about multimodal activities, a lot of folks that are happy about the, the additional facilities and, and the desire that it be done the right way. You know, one of the, one of the things that we're, because of the scope of the project is predominantly Seward Highway and a small section of 36th Avenue, we're, on the ends, of course, we're being, we're tying into 36th Avenue, which is a pretty narrow right-of-way and, and pretty, pretty full right-of-way, and the pathways and sidewalks are immediately adjacent to the curb. So we're having to tie into those, but we did get some suggestions that we're planning to try to implement, is to try to get at least some separation of the pathway between Old Seward and the other ramp intersection north of, or between those two, just short section of 36th Avenue where we think we're going to have space to offset the pathway there. So that's one of the changes that we plan to make from the, from the open house. Folks that are pretty happy about the new connection between Tudor and 36th, and then some comments about trying to see what we can do to, to better tie into the MOA's plans for 32nd and 33rd, particularly the little segment of Fairbanks Street that we're going to be putting in to add some pedestrian facilities to that stretch. So that's, that's really the predominant questions that we heard and comments. Here's where we are in the schedule process. As we said, the noise study, preliminary engineering, and 35% design will be largely completed over the next six or nine months. So that's all we have for you today. Any questions?
I don't see any at the moment. Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and open it up. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this matter, go ahead and come forward. And if you could, before you begin, state your name for the record, and if you're testifying as an individual or on behalf of an organization. Sorry, can you turn it on? My understanding is there should be a green tab where you just need to touch it lightly to turn it on, and it'll make a red light come on by the mic there.
Got it, okay. My name is David Evans, and I'm a member of the Rogers Park Community Council Transportation Committee.
Sorry, are you speaking on behalf, in your, in your position as a member of the...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So I was also Rogers Park, one of Rogers Park's representatives to the Midtown Congestion Relief Project while Dowell was working on the planning environmental linkages study, and Steve Noble did a great job of making sure that non-motorized considerations were taken into account in that project, so we were a little surprised when the proposed design is shown in the April 19th open house, although it included some, some really nice, some really nice fireweed on the overpass and some treatment on the overpass like Muldoon has. It did not have a separated bikeway, and the non, the AMAT's non-motorized plan recommends a separated bikeway on 36th. And so I'm asking you today to ensure that this project complies with the non-motorized plan's recommendation. And just for your reference, the non-motorized plan, table 5.2 on page 84, lists, this is project 26, West 36, separated bikeway, and it's also shown as a separated bikeway in a number of maps. And a separated bikeway is either a buffered bike lane or a protected bike lane, and that's as shown on page 200 of the non-motorized plan. And your packet on page, or section 4.1.4, shows that this project is currently calling for multi-use pathways, not separated bikeways. And I hope that you would be willing to make sure that the project complies with the non-motorized plan. I think that's pretty much the extent of my... Oh, so another thing is that your staff report does mention the non-motorized plan, but the only thing that it mentions in there is that this separated bikeway is a low priority for, in the non-motorized plan. And I don't think that means that a separated bikeway shouldn't be constructed, but as a standalone project, if you're going to list projects in order of importance, having this one as a standalone would, would be on a low priority. But this is going to be our one bite at the apple for this particular location, especially going underneath the Seward Highway, and if the bridge isn't made wide enough to have separated bikeways to go through, we're not going to have it ever. It's going to be that way for the rest of my lifetime, if not yours. So I'd appreciate if you'd focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I see we've got at least one question in the queue here. Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, thank you. You, in the AMAT's plan that you were just referencing, I heard you say West 36, and I guess I was just curious to know if that section you're quoting actually applies to this section, which I'm not positive, but I'm thinking is not West 36, since it's east of A Street.
Can you turn your mic back on? Sorry. There you go.
Okay, there we go. Unfortunately, I didn't copy the entire section of that table, but it lists, I think it starts in, at Arctic Valley, or sorry, Arctic Boulevard, and goes to McInnes, so it encompasses the project corridor. And the staff should have a copy of the full non-motorized plan to double-check me on that, but maps show, clearly show also a separated bikeway for the entire length of that corridor.
Okay, thanks. I don't doubt it, but I just heard that and wanted to clarify.
That's, yeah, good catch.
And I'll just ask, if you happen to have in front of you the page number in the staff packet that you referenced where it describes the non-motorized plan and, and mentions the separated bikeway as a low priority, what...
So that table 5.2 also has a column that has priority, and that's where low priority is listed.
What page number are you looking at?
It's on page 84.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification, you're talking about in the long-range motor, or the, the non-motorized plan, right? Page 84 of that?
The AMAT's non-motorized plan.
Yeah, not of our packet.
Did you say there was, I thought you, I thought you said there was a page in the packet you were looking at where it discussed the non-motorized plan? Was there, was there a different page other than the page 45 that you referenced?
Page 10.
Yeah, I didn't copy that in my notes here, but I do recall that staff cited the non-motorized plan and said, mentioned the low priority part, but not the separated bikeways part.
Okay, thank you.
And point of information, I think a commissioner said it, but it's, it is page 10.
And full disclosure, I used to work with staff.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. I think you'll need to turn it on again. There's, I think, a little green tab, if you can just touch it with your finger. if you can just touch it with your finger.
That's, that's yellow.
Thank you. Yellow, okay. I appreciate the clarification now, I know.
My name is Bob Butera, and I'm also with Rogers Park Community Council. And I'm here to speak to this project and basically about speed limits. And as a little background, our council has participated in this project through the years as the Highway-to-Highway Project, the Midtown Congestion and Relief Project, now the 36th Project, and now the context-sensitive solutions part of this project. And our understanding is that this project is being done to improve safety. That's one of the primary reasons. And that also, one of this project's biggest drawbacks to the neighborhoods around it, which is numerous neighborhoods, not just Rogers Park Community Council, is noise. There's going to be a noise study that's going to be done. It's going to cost a lot of money. Noise is a big issue. And yet, one of the easiest ways to improve safety and noise is to reduce speeds on these roads. Right now, and what we've heard continuously on this project is that it would be 45 miles an hour on the main road and 35 miles per hour in the frontage roads. And we have continuously made a comment supporting that. But in the context-sensitive solutions report, it was up to 50 miles an hour. And we've had some conversations back and forth on this, but when the comments came through from the context-sensitive solutions, there was no agreement that said we should change this table in that report. It was left as it was at 50 miles per hour. And so our big ask here, and I don't think it's a big ask, is that that error in the CSS report is corrected. And that's on table... Steve, what table is that? Yeah, neither can I, but I'll find it for you. And so that's one ask I have. And the second is that, doing a little bit of research on both safety and noise, it became really clear that these are both exponential things. There's a National Transportation Safety Board paper on speed and fatalities. And at 20 miles per hour, it's 5%. At 30 miles an hour, it's 45% fatal. And at 40, it goes up to 85%. You can make a huge difference if you drop speeds. And I'm even thinking dropping below the 45-35 that's now being thought about. Maybe we can bring that down even further through the midtown area.
Thank you. Was there, was there a second specific change that you were requesting other than modifying the table that you were getting to?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if there was another change, specific change that you were requesting other than updating the 50 miles an hour on the table to, to finish?
We, I mean, first, we'd like to make sure that that table is stuck, is changed, because we got no acknowledgement that there's going to be any change to that table. And so we would, at a minimum, like to see 35 miles per hour on the, or a maximum, 35 mile-per-hour maximum speed limit on the frontage roads and 45 on the main road. But we'd also love to entertain that, as the context-sensitive part of this being a road through midtown and its effect on both noise and safety, that you think about dropping that, maybe another five miles per hour on each of those. So we'd like to go even further.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Any questions?
I don't see any more. Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak? Okay, seeing no one further, we've got some time reserved for rebuttal if you'd like to add anything.
Sure. I just have a couple of comments. One is, I want to thank Dave and Bob. They've been two of the most steady citizens involved in any project I've ever had in my entire career. And so their input has been very valuable, and not just looking out for the best interest of their community, but, but helping us to, helping us to make, make sure we're keeping those interests in mind. So I appreciate their energy and coming here and testifying. In response to a couple of the comments, one is, with regards to the bikeway on 36th Avenue, I don't have a map of the corridor up in front of me here, but essentially, if you can envision that 36th Avenue where we're tying in, east of Old Seward, and on the west side, sorry, west of Old Seward, on the west side of the corridor, and close to Latouche on the east side, we're having to match in with that existing road. And so putting in a bike lane that goes all the way and ends at nothing doesn't make any sense. But we do, we do agree that between the two signals, now is the time to make sure that we design that cross-section, to have the, have the cross-section that we need. I'm not going to commit that we can put what size shoulders and those kind of things we can put in, but certainly making the bridge wide enough to accommodate space for it makes a lot of sense and can probably be done with very little or no additional cost. And Noah punched me in the back if I'm saying something I shouldn't. But then, we've also got, but, but, and also putting in a quarter-mile of bike lane doesn't make a lot of sense either between two signals and particularly trying to tie it through those intersections where there's not room on the other side of the signals to put, put the bike lane. But putting in that space for it now so that when the larger project on 36th Avenue is done, this is not the bottleneck, does make some sense. So, and we talked about that, I talked about the ability for us to separate the pathway, and, and potentially, we can, we can look at also putting shoulders on the, on the road that in the future could become part of that bikeway, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense to have such a small section of it. That would almost be more confusing than not to have a bike lane there and nowhere else. With regards to the speeds, just to clarify the intent, during the Midtown Congestion Relief Study, we, we have made it clear that in the future, when the freeway is fully, or the, the new Seward Highway Controlled Access Facility, if you want to call it a freeway, it'll look like a freeway as it, as it is extended north through midtown, that we are designing that section of the highway as a 55 mile-an-hour highway, not a 65 mile-an-hour highway. However, for this 36th and then the frontage roads, which will become the, essentially, the, the business access corridor portions of the highway, that those would be anywhere between, you know, 35, like what Bob said is accurate. We said, we indicated that those would probably be in the 35 to 40 mile-an-hour range for those roads. We've not committed to anything. We haven't made any decisions on what those roads would be. But for now, it's really the, it's really, they're really just ramps between, for the 36th Avenue project, they're really just ramps between accessing the highways for now. And the speed change location that's out there today, where it goes from 65 down to 45, we're not moving that as part of this project. That would stay in its existing location as part of the 36th Avenue interchange, because we don't want to push faster traffic into midtown only to have to stop at the Benson Boulevard signal. So that's our intent, to leave that existing, probably would have to be upgraded, but some, there'll be a speed, there'll be a speeds change and a signal warning system in place in the new configuration that would be in about the exact location as the current speed change that would taper traffic down to 45 as, as, to match the existing section, Benson and North. Yes?
I've got Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm understanding your responses to the public testimony that we heard today. So in our packet, we have a supplemental item that is an exchange between DOT and I believe the Rogers Park Community Council in regards to that speed at that, right where you're talking about. Am I correct in understanding that DOT's response is that that change is in fact part of the project already?
The fact of the matter is, we're not planning to change the speeds from what's out there today already. That's part of our project, is to leave that in place. We're not planning to speed up the traffic. But when, I'm just, but I'm letting you know that as part of the Midtown Congestion Relief Project, when the freeway is extended north and Benson and Northern Lights and Fireweed are also controlled access, it is the intent that a 55 mile-per-hour facility will, will go north. That's, that's what the facility is being designed for. But that's not going to happen until that future project is, is, or projects are, are constructed. And then there's, it also has to be taken into, into context of, of the future Glenn Mobility Study that's also being looked at right now for north of midtown. But for this project, one that's subject to this, this set of plans and this purview and this design study, we're not planning to change the speeds on the Seward Highway as a result of this project. They're planning to remain as they currently exist.
Thank you. And then if you could clarify your response to the share, the separated bike pathways as well? I, I believe from our previous discussion at last month's meeting, we had addressed this issue as well. And my understanding was that where we have right-of-way and where it's possible that DOT will consider separated pathways as much as possible throughout the project area. Is that still correct?
Yes, and I'm telling you that the space where that is possible is between the two signals on 36th Avenue. Maybe not on both sides, but certainly on one side it is possible, because DOT has space on the north side. On the south side, I can't say for sure that we'll be able to separate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strick.
Thank you, and to the chair. A lot of conversations here about noise levels and so forth, and I understand the, what's in place. The speed, what do we call it? The transitional speed, where in this case it drops from 60 down to 45? Where exactly is that occurring now?
Right now, just past, between Dowling and Tudor Road, you get a warning that the speeds are going to be reducing. As you go under the Tudor Road overpass, it changes from 65 down to 55. And then, and then between Tudor and 36th, you get another speed change down to 45. So there, over the course of about a mile, it goes from 65 down to 45. And of course, there is a flashing warning sign that's a quarter-mile or half a mile north of Tudor Road that gives a heads-up that there is a signal coming. There is, there is a curve in the road. Side distance isn't ideal for a freeway-type condition. When it's coming to an end, you typically have freeway ends, signal ahead-type signalization, which is, which is what would continue to be the case, because even though we're getting rid of one signal on, on the main, on the main line, we're putting in a, we're putting in an overpass, and we're not wanting to push faster speeds north of 36th at this time. We're wanting to keep that speed transition where it's at.
But one way to hold down sound is to have a consistent speed. And these transitional speed areas, whether it's going up or down, actually creates more noise, the downshifting, the acceleration. Would you agree?
It can, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot that plays into noise, but certainly, certainly stopping traffic at an intersection.
Well, trucks downshifting, especially large semis, when they're downshifting, the brake brakes and so forth, creates an abundance of noise. So this overpass, I think ultimately, does solve part of the community's problem with noise, and then it creates a consistent speed past the neighborhood areas as opposed to having the braking and acceleration that we might otherwise see.
So Commissioner Strick, I would, I would agree with what you're saying, but I'll, I'll just say that I'm hesitant to fully agree until I see the results of the noise study, because there still is going to be a signal at the ramp intersections. There'll still be, and it's a little bit closer to the neighbors than, than the previous ramp was. And then we're elevating Seward Highway, so it's about 20 feet higher. And so I don't know what the net effect on the noise is going to be, but I, I imagine it's going to be fairly close to what it is today. But until we do the analysis, I won't know for sure.
And that's fair regarding that, where, on the frontage road where it's dropping down to 35. So that, that's in the benefit of the neighborhood as well. So, thank you.
Okay, I don't see anything else pending. Thank you. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may pass a question back to staff, as Ms. Appleby was involved in the interchange that a prior commissioner referenced as well in our supplemental packet. Would you mind weighing in, in your estimation, is there a table, or was there a table that we've heard about tonight that may benefit from update?
Commissioner Ron, I believe you're referring to the comments that we, the department received from the Rogers Park Community Council. Those start on either... In the initial packet, they were on page 299, and then there's also a supplemental packet that has an email exchange. The initial packet on page 299 is where Rogers Park mentioned the speed in the table. I also found when I looked at the table and tried to find a difference from the existing speeds, I didn't see that. So that's why I didn't mention it in the staff report. I felt that the additional exchange seemed to back me up. I, I guess I couldn't find where, where it was different
So just for reference, we're looking at, this is page 20, Table 2. Page 20 of the report on staff packet, just one second.
I believe page 44 has Table 2 from the DSR.
Yeah, page 44.
And I do see the 50 miles per hour on it, but it's part of the old DSR, not the packet supplemental.
Oh, sorry. So on page 44, Table 2, it says it's 50 miles per hour between Benson to 36. And unless I'm missing something, it sounded like in the recap, that's where the speed already starts to slow from the 55 when you're, you're coming in from south of town. So that's why I didn't have the change, because I felt by Benson you would already hit 50. But that was why I didn't change it, unless, unless I missed something. But, but that's why I didn't make the change and didn't feel there was a need to make the change.
So I guess I'll just ask the question. So my understanding, and I should know since I drive the area a fair bit, but I'm going more off of Mr. Noble's statements there that the transition to 45 is just south of, of 36th. And I read the table as saying 50 between Benson and 36th, so that would be north of 36th, right?
May I speak to that?
Yes, please.
The 50, it was supposed to be 45. We mentioned it at the last meeting, but it didn't. it didn't, hasn't been, that's, once it's in there, it's in there forever and it can't be rooted out. But yes, it's supposed to say 45 there.
Okay, thank you.
May I make a point of, just for my own understanding. So, so perhaps it would, to be clear, it would say, we could just get rid of the, the first part and it would just say slowing to 45 just south of Benson Boulevard. Does that, does that seem like that matches what Mr. Noble stated or what the commission is suggesting?
My understanding is that it was a typo and it's 45 north of the inner, of the interchange.
That's correct. There's, there's no change on Seward Highway being proposed as part of this project to the speeds. It's, it's that simple. It's, it's supposed to be 45, yes. Yep.
And I guess just to, just for clarity too, then, while we're on it, it wouldn't be slowing to 45 just south of Benson. It just, it's a flat. 45 between Benson Boulevard to 36th Avenue is the most correct way to state it.
That's correct. It's 45 until it gets up to 15th at least. Then it might go down to 35 or 40. I can't remember.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Ms. Appelby, as I, I'm sensing that we may have gotten some clarity on that point. Would the department take exception to an additional advisory comment that kind of captures that statement?
Commissioner Ron, the commission may add either additional advisory comments or, or additional conditions of approval, or, or you can modify the existing one. I think it would be appropriate to, to modify this table comment. I'm, I'm clear now on what it meant with the revised wording. It, I would just ask that the commission maybe be clear at exactly what it states. Because if you just fix the typo, then it, it says it's 45, but also says slowing to 45, which I found confusing.
So I think to correct that box on Table 2, you would just say 45 miles per hour between Benson Boulevard to 36th Avenue and strike the rest. There's no slowing.
Okay. Well, with that, I don't see any further questions pending. So I suppose at this point, I would be happy to entertain a motion from anybody that we can get on the record and then facilitate any discussion.
Thank you. I move in case 2022-0023 to approve the loop ramp interchange. Alternative 1 preferred identified in the context sensitive solutions design study report for the Seward Highway 36th Avenue interchange project, subject to conditions 1 through 3 and the two advisory comments shown on page 11 of the staff report. Additional advisory comment to modify table content, comments to read, correct Table 2 to read 45 miles per hour to Benson Boulevard and 36th Avenue and strike the remaining. And strike.
Okay. And I guess just for clarity, the, the change in Table 2 would be to have it read, the first bullet would be posted speed limit 45 miles an hour between Benson Boulevard to 36th Avenue, full stop. Okay. That motion is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Strick, would you like to speak to your motion?
This process of looking at context, study reports have been a challenge with the different stakeholders throughout my tenure here on the commission for the last nearly nine, nine and a half years. I would like to compliment the parties to this particular study report. It works. And want to thank the parties for bringing this forth. We had a long discussion in the past on this. We've gone through iterations for the last year and a half. And this is a culmination of a lot of different ideas and plans that, quite frankly, if you were just now getting involved, you would be appalled of what was at one time going to be proposed. And so the compromises that have been reached here, the process by which this has gone through, I want to compliment all the parties and the stakeholders involved for coming together. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. Fellow commissioners, I'll concur with Commissioner Strick's comments, though I don't have the tenure that he does on the commission. What I see here this evening and have heard in my shorter time on the commission has been one of a positive representation of how a project interacts with, with the public. While I intend to support the motion, I, I would be interested in any other commissioners' thoughts around the, the bike lane as it was discussed tonight. What I thought I heard from the petitioner, petitioner's representative was one of a willingness to not only consider, but perhaps even comply with. And maybe I'm going a little too far there, but for that segment of road where it's allowable per existing right-of-way to deal with the non-motorized transportation plan is, is asking for. And so if any other commissioners would like to comment on that, I'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah, I would be willing to support in another, I don't, I don't know if it'd be an advisory comment or a, or a recommendation of, or a condition of approval, or just an advisory comment that, that states the, the overpass would be designed to accommodate the future widths. That, that seems appropriate to me considering like a separated pathway that ends or a bike lane that ends would seem kind of odd to me at this time.
I would also be supportive of advisory comment that read that way. And I think since invited, I will add that I do bike through the area and perhaps this is a personal preference, but I vastly prefer even a short section of separated pathway to none. And I, I believe that that's generally preferred by, by most non-motorized users.
So we still at the moment have the main motion pending before us. I think if anyone is interested in amending it to add an additional advisory comment, that would require a motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did not hit record when a prior commissioner was speaking, but I'll try and recap his words. I move to amend the main motion to add an advisory comment such that the project incorporate design of the overpass to accommodate the width necessary to meet the intent of the non-motorized transportation plan for bike lanes where feasible. Open for correction where, where needed.
I could add a, perhaps just a point of information to the motion. So the, I did pull up the AMATS non-motorized plan. So that's page 10 that the commentary referenced. And it's, it is on page 44 where it says there's a separated bike way. So you could say that, that advisory comment is consistent with the, with 36th Avenue being noted as to have a separated bike way within the AMATS non-motorized plan, if you would like to do so.
Commissioner Ron, I see you.
Sure. Understanding that I've made the motion and it's been seconded, don't think we're in discussion yet, but I appreciate the improved language by, by the planning department and would be happy to reword my recommended advisory comments, put forward as an amendment, strike the language previously provided and revert to design consistent with 36th Avenue as addressed in the Anchorage Non-Motorized Transportation Plan. Is that what we're after?
Okay. So the advisory comment would be to, and I guess did you want to still adjust the width of the overpass? So have the width designed consistent to allow consistency with the non-motorized plan on 36th Avenue?
I would prefer to leave that to the designers.
Okay. So it's just to have the plan consistent with the, the AMATS non-motorized plan. Commissioner Strick, you second that motion? Okay, that motion is seconded. Commissioner Ron, if you'd like to speak to your motion?
Nothing additional this time. I appreciate the discussion we've had on the matter. And I think I'm good for now.
Okay, I don't see any further comments. We'll go ahead and call a vote on that motion to amend. Okay, that motion passes with seven votes in favor. We now have the amended main motion before us. And seeing, I guess no further comments, we'll go ahead and call a vote there as well. Okay, that motion passes with seven votes in favor. Thank you, everyone, for participating in the process in this case. Okay, so I think we have just one final item, a commissioner's comment from Commissioner Winchester.
Yeah, through service on this committee, I asked if, been asked to fill a seat on the Community Advisory Committee for AMATS. And we just had our second quarter meeting. I just wanted to point out that there's a, the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan has a public workshop scheduled for May 11th. There's a virtual public workshop from 10 to 11 to 1:00 p.m. And then later that evening at the Fairview Rec Center from 6:00 to 8:00. There's the public workshop number one. There's a website out there if you have questions, but it's a, good to get involved in that if you're interested.
Thank you, Commissioner Winchester. Okay, seeing nothing further now, we'll go ahead and look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Strick, seconded by Commissioner Pulis. Seeing no objection, we'll go ahead and adjourn.